This conference will now be recorded.
Let's call this meeting the Sedalia City Council order, roll of ball please. Robinson.
Here.
Holden.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Here.
Bliss.
Here.
All right, we have one item on the agenda that's about your work session, Mr. Shaw, you have four.
Thank you. Well, this is our annual budget work session to where we go through in more detail the budget items. This year, as we talked about at the last meeting, we kind of set up some of the larger decision items for you. So we'll go through this. Today's presentation, basically I've divided it into four sections. First of all, the summing of the revenue expenditures, which we went through the majority of that last meeting. We'll just hit the highlight again to remind everybody. We'll review the budget draft and then really specifically, the lion's share of the meeting tonight will be specifically some items for your individual line item decisions as far as those things. And then finally, we'll go through a summary of the next steps of where we go from here. As we go through tonight, there will be three guideposts that we'll try to watch for. First of all, the ongoing revenues versus the ongoing expenditures, along with their trends, the budget elasticity, if you will, and we'll talk more about that elasticity word. So the projected fund balances with the emphasis on the general fund. We keep those within the capital adopted policy of the 35% to 75% of ongoing revenues. And then a customer focus. Again, we set that up throughout the strategic planning process of working for value-driven decisions from the customer's perspective or the citizen's perspective. And then just kind of a statement, we believe that these gauges will help us keep focused on, in the right direction and continue with a strong history of fiscal discipline work resulting in a healthy and stable organization for years to come. So some specific considerations, as presented last meeting, the general fund balance is beyond target range, but we must still watch the sustainability. And, you know, we went through the revenue trends and all of that and how the sales tax is performing very well. Historically, over the last 11 years has averaged 1.47% increase year over year. And that represents about 46% of our, well, 33% of our total revenues, but 46% of our general fund. So if that goes up by 1.47%, that accounts for about 0.68% of our total revenue increase. Even if it goes up the 8%, that we've been lucky enough to experience this this whole year today, that accounts for a 3.68% increase. While at the same time, wages represent 74% of our general fund. And as we talked about at the last meeting, you know, set up for the decisions for tonight, is trying to increase that on an average of nine and a half percent. And so if 74% of our costs go up by nine and a half percent and everything else stays the same, which we know is not the case because of inflation affects everything, but that increases our expenditures by 7.03%. So just comparing those two factors create pressures over time that the 3.68% increase in revenue does not cover the 7.03% increase in expenditures. So that's creating that elasticity, if you will, or structurally, our budget is getting tighter and tighter and reducing the ability to make effective decisions because essentially the labor eats up all of your budget and that becomes harder for you to make individual decisions each year. So at some point, the only thing you've got left to do is if you box yourself into that corner, the only thing you've got left to do is reduce headcounts and their life service levels to the customers or to the citizens. So this year though, you know, it's particularly challenging because of the short-term issues of where the labor market is. So we're going to make some recommendations here tonight that we do utilize or we do make the budget less elastic or we do make those decisions out of necessity. And thankfully, we've got, in the past, we've created enough fund balance that we can make those decisions. So setting up those thoughts. Again, here's the report or here's the summary of the budgets that we presented last time. And we'll go through more detail of what makes up some of these numbers. But again, we were at the 57%, I'm sorry, I'm pointing at it and you all can't see my mouth. The 57% fund balance, that's down from the 65%, again, making it less elastic than what we had had in the past. But I think there's good reasons for that to go ahead and push that forward. The capital improvements, we'll talk some more about that. But really, that $3 million of that $4 million fund balance is restricted funds. And it really has to do with the timing of the loan with the Hecarri Community Center. So there's about 1.8 million, 1.6 million that were ran in there of usual fund balance. And then we'll look at the Midtown Special Allocation Fund. That was really the street skate, we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then the sanitation, we'll talk a little bit more. So the general fund, as I mentioned, is within the range. However, we're dealing with that great recession, the baby boomer retire rate is vast and the people are coming into the job market at a rate of about 10,000 per day. And then right now, we have about 1.9 jobs for every job seeker. Inflation, the Fed's tightening policies, they pose a little chance for a soft landing. Again, we talked about that last meeting. Also, we cautioned that the inverted yield curve has never been inverted this much for this long without recession following. Despite that though, we are recommending reducing the elasticity to keep up with the labor market. Capital improvements for that fund, as I mentioned, there's about $3 million worth of restricted funds for the Hecarri Community Center. And we'll look at that fund balance more in detail and make some decision items there. The Central Business and Cultural District, which is now pretty much termed the Main Streets Organization, has a fund balance that's moving from 130,000 to 103,000. And that's really intentionally expending down reserves primarily on the Sotran and the downtown restaurants. The Midtown Special Allocation Fund, again, we have the street skate that was completed in fiscal year 2021. And basically, to get that done, we loaned out of the capital improvement program $825,000 and then repaid that fund back through '22 and '23. So now funding for this year, this coming year can be dedicated to the remaining projects that were approved in that chip fund. The Special Revenue Fund for Transportation has built a fund balance and we use much of these reserves to fund the anger purchase in FY '22. This draft has the second installment of $200,000 to replace the CIP reserves that were used. That was essentially a million dollars and we've been advised that over five years. The Water Pollution Control Fund, it's continuing toward operations and capital replacements funded from user fees. We still have several collections in plant assets that are beyond or near their expected useful life. And we have reduced the operating loss. And just as a reminder, the included in the operating expenditures is $2.7 million worth of depreciation that's not cash. So it is generating cash flow positives now. And the available, however, the available reserves are minimal in comparison to the capital needs. The recent rash of failing equipment highlights these issues. As you all know, we've amended this budget over times and had several emergency purchases that we brought to you on pumps primarily that have been failing. And so, you know, at some point, I keep thinking we'll have all of these pumps replaced, but they keep finding more. So, but it's just, it just highlights that those issues of that aging plant, aging plants. And then also, we are under administrative order consent on one plant, or scheduled compliance, not administrative order consent, a scheduled compliance on the North Waste Water Treatment Plan that DNR is saying we need to upgrade that plan to meet the current requirements. No surprise to us that we are forced to do that. You'll hear in the public hearing on the 20th that we have proposed, and included in this budget, a rate increase of 9.5% for the sewer. And then on the water department, we had cost reductions were allowed us to hold off the past scheduled rate increases from the fee to debt service. But now we're at the point to where we need to start again catching those up for capital improvements going forward. And so we're proposing a 5% rate increase again this year primarily due to just keeping up a little bit with inflation. Sanitation or the trash service, we have implemented the automated trucks. That allowed us to reduce staff and then we picked up several customers through the second and third carts. And that gives us a better match of the fee with the level of service. We eliminated the commercial service, basically it was operation at a loss and the equipment was wore out. So we had to either increase the fees enough to allow us to purchase new capital equipment or get completely out of that service and let the private sector handle all of it instead of just the portions that we weren't handling. Change pickup on demand, the fee is now for the clean tweets and the on-demand is now a rate per service. We encourage containers rather than the pickup on demand. Our, the bulk, the scrap truck field, set that out at the curb. We encourage them to do containers instead. We eliminated the curb side recycling, still just waiting on the market to return, but without a revenue source to offset that, it's just extra staff, it's extra fuel, it's extra wear and tear on the equipment that has no revenue source. So to keep it, keep the cost under control, we have eliminated that or really suspended it, I guess is a better word. Last year, we did a rate increase of $1.50 and then increased the senior citizens discount by another dollar to give them a net increase of 50 cents. But this year, we're not proposing a rate increase primarily just because to soften the blow because of the higher sewer and water rate increases to keep the impact on the residents' pocketbook as low as possible. We though must continue to bring it to a sustainable level. The past life losses need to be funded. The net fund deficit represents really alone from the cap one previous program. We still have unrestricted unusable, our unrestricted usable deficit of 2.5 million. When you add that to the capital, the funds invested in capital, it's $531,000 net. Just to give you a better picture, they have a negative cash, we're showing negative cash or cash advance from other funds of 1.8 million currently. So we need to, we need to continue to generate cash to pay that back. The trucks and the carts will be paid off in FY '24, which will help that situation. So with that, we have some specific items that we'll go through. And I'll bring up the spreadsheet here. Hopefully bring it up in a way you can see it instead of just me. So those of you that haven't been through this before, this is a spreadsheet that we use to go through this budget work session, if you will. At the top, that'll be thrown up there at the top. So you'll see going across here, we have our revenues over our expenditures. That summary, we are showing $15,000 worth of such revenue over our expenditures in the original draft. That results in a fund balance of 9.459 million dollars. That is, represents 57.4% of our ongoing revenues. As we go down through here, we'll either check or uncheck items to include or exclude things from the draft from where we at. And this number will automatically update as we do. As you can see, there's a number in there right now and that represents some things that the mayor and I went through. There's a few things that I missed in the original draft that we needed to add back in or I recommend that we add back in. And then some things that the mayor and I are going to recommend that we either take out or put in. So with that update, we're at a $4,000 right at a break even, if you will, to result in a $9.4 million or 57.3%. We set the target at 10.7 million, which is 65% of our ongoing revenues. And so we're falling short of that target of by 1.2, almost 1.3 million dollars. Again, you'll see as we go down through here, really the reason for that is just we're really reaching to keep up with the market. It's not something that we can sustain each year going forward. But this year, I think we need to, to keep up with the market, later market. So with that said, we'll go down through each of these and I'll just show you as we click or unclick things. The first item was the fail to new stack. We put in there a 2% increase and that generates about $145,000. And that is included in the draft. If we uncheck that, then it will actually take that $145,000 away from that. See the numbers updated up here. So if we, that's how each of those lines will work. I should also mention from our strategic planning session, we ranked 17 items in the general fund. And so if it was one of those things that we ranked, like the things recruitment incentives was ranked number three. And so it was a $30,000 and it is included in the draft. So going down through here, again, the sales tax, we've got 4% total is included in the draft. The property tax, there was a 2% included in the draft. One of the things that I missed is selling the fire truck, the old fire truck when the new one does arrive. And that revenue needs to be added in there at $30,000. So I added that and that's part of the changes. Under personnel related costs, we put in the draft or I'm recommending that we add as an employee benefit to all employees, the opportunity to have a family pack. We have worked with Amy on the parson rig and set a flat fee of $10,000 if we want to add that. Again, if you all want to take that out, we just uncheck it and it takes it out of the budget. So I guess my question real quick on that is I see $10,000 as the wellness incentive from insurance, two lines down. Yes, yeah, so there is, we get $10,000 as a wellness incentive from our insurance company. It would cover both of these two line items. We've got $18,000 there. If we go below $10,000 in those two line items, then we have to take some of that revenue away that we don't get, we wouldn't get, if that makes sense? Does that make sense? Okay. So those other health and wellness incentives such as the screens, the biometric screens and those kinds of things at $8,000 and then the $10,000 cover that. And if anybody wants any additional questions or comments or wants me to check or unchecked something, just holler at me, otherwise I'll just, I'll just keep going down through here and explain. The Christmas party, we spent about $10,100 on the Christmas party, including the gift cards and those kinds of things. We spend, and that is included in the draft, the employee picnic at the park. In the park, we have, that is a new item and we included $1,500 in the draft. There were some other employee promotional items that we had proposed in the draft or Shannon had proposed and those are not included in the draft at this point. The fire pension, the old frozen plan, the legacy plan. Right now, we're still waiting on working with loggers to get that carried over into a 15-year amortization. Right now, what I've included in the draft is really just the property tax that is included or that is set aside for there. And then I put the total amount of loggers into the fire department draft. So essentially, we're setting aside $155,000 to deal with legacy. Fire overtime for in-house hosting, training, hosting and all departments training meetings and meetings at 22,500 is included. We are proposing to change the structure in the police department to add a fourth commander. And so this kind of creates a ripple effect. We're not increasing the number of personnel, but we're, we will promote a sergeant to a fourth commander. And then you will have then probably a corporal that gets promoted to sergeant and an officer that replaces, gets reported to a corps. So there's a ripple effect in there and that's really what represents the estimated $20,000. And we just kind of pulled that number out. And I should have said this earlier, but I've asked, all of the department gets to be here in case you have any questions or want to discuss any of these items, getting more details behind the thinking of those kinds of things. And obviously support here if you all want to talk about that in any detail at all. On line 29, the fire overtime for, is that just for the overtime or does that include the, like the leadership? I know they're going to do a leadership training stuff. This is just the overtime. Just the overtime, okay. The other cost of that training is elsewhere in another line item.
Online number 30, what brought about the idea to add another commander? Is there supervisory is what we're needing or?
Right.
Oh, I thought it said.
Having supervision and control.
How many, how many, any staff are we down?
The police frozen pension contribution, that's really, it's now in loggers. So unless we want to unwind that transaction with loggers and get rid of that 15-year amortization, which I don't recommend, but that really has to be there. But if you all want to look at something like that, we certainly can figure that out. The police recruitment incentives, as I mentioned, that was ranked number three. It is included in the draft at $30,000. Public works, we at one time had two project managers and she had proposed to go back to the second project manager. I had taken that out of the draft, tried to get again as much as we can to wait. The pre-hire for the fire crew for the third station was ranked number four. And we had grant funding in there, proposed to do that safer grant. However, I left both of them out of the draft as I think since we delayed the third fire station at this point in time, I don't think that really happens until at least next fiscal year. So I don't propose to put that into this year's budget. Okay, so wage rates, here's the biggie here. A normal step increase, as we gave you the numbers at the last meeting, a normal step increase costs us about $159,000 to the general fund. I have also put in there a $1.50 as a COLA as opposed to a percentage. So, and I've broken those amounts out between police, fire and all of the rest of the general fund. So for the police department, that $1.50 costs us $219,307. If we, and then also, I have worked with Chief Wirth and we've dug some, and the mayor and we've done some other adjustments trying to get more at our bottom end of the scale to increase that even more. And so those added adjustments would be another $58,500. Then for the fire department, we kind of did the same thing. We've got a $1.50 there at 213, 581. And then again, trying to add more to the bottom end of the scale would cost another $25,000 to a left. For the rest of the general fund, it would cost for just the $1.50 across the board would be another $209,350. So the total for wage increases is $885,453, so. And this doesn't take into account the increases in transportation as well? No, this is just the general fund, so you're correct. And we'll see the transportation considered there, so. I have also included, really, and the mayor talked, the mayor and I talked about this section here. I included, just for your information, if we added another quarter to take it to $1.75, it would be another $107,000. I really don't propose that and again, we're, and that's why we don't have a checkbox here. We're just giving you numbers. What I recommend is that we look at that possibly mid-year or further into the year when things maybe settle down a little bit. Again, I think there's a recession coming. I just don't know when and how deep it will be. I also don't know what the labor market, when the labor market will settle down. So I would suggest that it's really a reach really for us to get to the $1.50. And so I would not recommend going beyond that until we get more information. Does that make sense for everybody? Okay.
I have a question. Hammer, have we paid with the two $500 bonuses?
Let's see, the second one hasn't gone out yet, it's next, next check. Okay, so I don't remember the totals on that, that it was, we paid the 500, the first 500 in December and the next one is scheduled for launch. first five hundred in December, and the next one is scheduled for, for launch sixteenth or something like that, or not fifteenth, March seventh or something. Ken? Okay. That answer your question, Ken?
Do you have an idea what the total of that is?
I don't remember, I can probably look at a.
Looking like two fifty.
Sounds right.
About two hundred and fifty employees roughly.
Do you think it changed everybody's attitude a little bit?
Yes, however, let's see, it was, total cost was three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars citywide. To the general fund, it was one eighty-five, eight hundred. I think it was, I think it was appreciated, I think it probably helped out. I don't think that we got as much mileage out of that as we could by adding it into the gross. I don't know if anybody was disagree or agree with that. Does that answer your question? Anything else on wages before we move on? I mean, we can always come back, so. Non-personnel costs, here's another piece that I missed in the first draft. We do have to make our last two payments on the debt service on the CO terminal here at City Hall. It will be paid off in FY twenty-four, but there was thirty thousand eight hundred that I missed in the original draft. The charter process, this is legal and election cost. We budgeted that, our debt is ranked as number five, and it's eighty-three thousand five hundred that is included in the draft. The mayor and I talked a little bit about that, that likely, that expenses will likely be towards the end of the fiscal year, if not carried over into next fiscal year. So that may be something that we have a little bit of room. If things start going bad in the budget, we can delay that, if that makes sense. The mayor's, our vehicle for the mayor, and admin, it's really not just the mayor, but just basically admin, was, or was ranked as number eleven. The mayor said, instead of doing that, let's just do an allowance, a travel allowance.
I second that.
Okay.
Or something like that, I mean, that's.
That's what's included in the draft at this point. Retail recruitment was ranked as number sixteen, and we, it is not in the budget. However, one thing that, in that area that we did include in the draft was to pay for a subscription for cell phone data. It's the placer AI, placer dot AI. It'll, I don't know if you all remember, when we were going through the comprehensive plan, the folks from PGAD were sharing a lot of data from that, and so we were proposing to add that subscription to gather that data. The annual MML conference for council and administration is budgeted at seventy-five hundred dollars. The legislative conference for council at twenty-three hundred. The clean title legal work at twenty-five thousand dollars is budgeted. Pioneer Trails News, again, the mayor and I talked quite a little bit about this, where we both questioned how much we get out of that. However.
It seems like we pay the most but get the least out of that.
You were reading my mind.
We've had this discussion every year for at least five or four years. I think if we're continuing to have this discussion, we need to take it out of the budget then.
Was it two years ago that we went back? I think right as I came on council, they were not on it, they were not on there. We went back and.
Yeah, we stopped paying it for those reasons, and we brought it back and said, well, let's give them another chance. We have gotten more since, since we've added back, Mayor Dawson's been working the tax committee.
I serve on that as an individual, I do not serve on that as a.
Explain to me what it is.
Pioneer Trails is the regional planning commission. It's four counties, let's see, it's Lafayette, Lea, Johnson and Pett. They represent, and they are typically supposedly the planning commission that feeds into the state planning of the needs for the, for the area. They also, basically, they do a lot of grant writing, really, but they do that for the smaller communities, and that's where they get the majority of their funding is to administer those grants. We've tried two, at least one occasion, we asked them for assistance in helping us write grants that we didn't have time for. They basically told us they didn't have time either, and so we went ahead and wrote the grant. And the CDBG was one of those, right? So again, we, you know, we gave them a shot, we did get some more information, our more input into the tax committee, but was that because of this or in spite of that, I guess?
Yeah, I'd be for taking that.
Yeah, I've been to the meeting.
Erwin, would this affect the stuff we do with the RSL?
Yeah.
Director Ogry, do you have any thoughts on this?
Was that the political answer?
Shouldn't we be able to talk to the county if there's something that we really needed help on, since they're represented on there? Don't laugh. But seriously.
You guys have a motion on the board?
Maybe we need it.
Do I have a second?
Thanks.
All those are favored?
I like.
All those are close?
Okay, we've got moved to cloud-based email, which is the exchange online prescription. Really, you know, again, this would be pretty tough to take out because we already have a lot of risk for our cybersecurity. The current plan that we have now is no longer supported, so Microsoft is going to force us to, whether it's now or in the very near future. And so we're already moving in that direction, so. The fire medical bags, and this is really replacement of the existing bags, and again, if you wanted to take that out, we would ask them to try to make the old ones last another year. Superback fans, these are battery operated, they are fans to clear out fires, clear smoke out of fires, they're portable fans that they use on fire scenes. Again, we could try to delay that, take those out. The new skid, which are equipment to transport people, you know, through the medical, medical responses, again, we could try to delay that, make the old ones last another year. The fire now seen light poles, those are not included in the draft, they were proposed, but again, I, that was the lower priority by the chief, so I left that one out trying to do enough room for wages as much as we could. Fire LED replacement lights on the trucks, we did reduce that from what he had originally proposed to do all of them, but left five thousand dollars in there to do a portion of the trucks, to give them the LED lights. Fire class A uniforms, we did not include in the draft. Those are, yeah, they'd be nice to have, but again, just trying to create as much room as we possibly could for wages. The fire, the second fire inspector vehicle, it was ranked at number twelve, it is included in the draft. If you remember, we, it started out being two trucks, and we got the used pickup that kind of fell in our laps this year, so we did a budget amendment for that, so then this is the remaining second vehicle for the fire inspectors. So the medical UTV vehicle was ranked at number seven, and so it is included in the draft. However, we added thirty-five thousand dollars for grant funds and made that grant dependent, so that's how we include it in the draft, as we would only do it if we can get the grant funds to do it. The fire low pressure and high flow attack package at fifty thousand dollars.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
For the granting, for the medical UTV, you've got them checked, whereas before it was depending on a grant and we had them unchecked. Is there a reason these are checked versus the other ones not being checked? It was depending on the grant, you got it, for the safer grant?
Yes. The safer grant, I did not have in the budget.
Okay.
So we're leaving them out.
Okay.
These I do have in the draft.
All right.
So we're leaving them in.
Just wanted to follow along.
But, you know, if you all want to make that change, like if you want to take out the grant funds and say we're going to do it whether we get the grant funds or not, then that's, that's how we would do that. Or if you want to take it out altogether, we would take both of them. Seven cents?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
The attack package at fifty thousand is ranked at number six, and it is included. The fire, the Freddie, Freddie, the fire truck is much like the medical UTV, we've included it, but included grant funds to where we would not do it unless we get the grant funds. It was ranked number thirteen. True Narx is a, Chief Ward may have to explain this one, this is a piece of equipment that is, that allows them to test for fentanyl to increase the safety of our officers in handling things that are suspected possibly have fentanyl in them. We included that in the draft, but then also, we are getting, as I mentioned, we are slated to get, start getting the first installment of our opioid settlement fund. And I believe this is an appropriate use for those settlement funds. Those funds are restricted to where they can only be used for opioid related items. And so this is something that I think would increase our safety for our officers, and we can utilize those funds that we wouldn't be able to use for other items. I explain all that right, Chief?
That actually passed our recreational.
Oh, okay. How many pieces of equipment did that buy?
We haven't talked about this because it didn't pass then, but is there any way that we can tell if a person is high on smoking their recreational marijuana? Is there any test that we should be looking into to get for the police department?
Yes, and that's really the drug recognition experts. There is specialized training that they can, we can send them to, and they actually have to qualify, they have to have a certain amount of experience, and they can get certified as drug recognition experts that not only can tell if they're under the influence, what they're under the influence of, as well as become expert witnesses for any kind of traffic case or any kind of case going forward. Is that close?
Yeah, I heard on the radio this morning what he was talking about, that this guy's specialty in this, where he can look at their eyes, in some way tell if they're high on their.
You know, just as an aside, do the fentanyl proof gloves make it into the budget for the PD and fire? Yes, yes. I'm trying to remember, we added something to the, to the fire.
Just recommended that we change from what we are to.
Okay. Okay. But is the supply item a little higher than it was? Okay.
Any, any items that we used last year?
Okay. We may have avoided it.
Normal latex glove, the fentanyl can pass through it, if they have a special glove in order to keep that from passing through it possibly.
And they, they are in the police budget, right? You said it. Good deal. So I might need to check on the fire too. Sorry about that. No, that's okay. Anything else on that? The police SRT training and equipment, the equipment was ranked number two in the strategic planning. There is sixteen thousand one eighty set aside in training for that, a hundred and fifteen thousand eight seventy-nine for the equipment, and then thirty-seven thousand offset with grant.
Help me remember the acronym SRT.
Special Response Team.
Okay.
Any questions?
What?
Comments? Body worn and hammer retention is sort of really an upgrade, those are fifteen years old?
Five, six years old.
Oh, okay. I'm way off on that one. Yeah. But anyway, the technology passes us by, it's improved, and so that was ranked as number one on the strategic planning at nine one thousand three fifty-six, and it is included in the, in the draft. Patrol cars, we have included in the draft, four new Durango's, that's heavier than what we normally do, you know, normally we have three some years, we've been doing two, but for the last three years now, we've been buying used equipment, and so to catch up, we need to do four for at least a couple of years to get us caught up and back on schedule to where they're rotating out when they're wore out. This year, if you remember, we did a budget amendment to, to not only buy the used ones that we bought, I can't remember, we bought two or three used ones, two this year, and then, and then we ordered four new ones that are, we think now will be in before March thirty-first. Yeah. The, the police vehicle that we hired, that we ordered at the same time has already come in to where we have that one. So what we've done is essentially we've got four new vehicles again for next year, and then I just put in there, if you all wanted to, just to look at that, to take that down to three vehicles, we could take out the four and add in the three, if you all wanted to.
How many do you need, Chief?
Ten.
Okay.
Okay.
White broke down on the highway, so he had to leave for that, otherwise he'd be here for this discussion. But the, um, um, we could do a fifty-four inch deck and save about five thousand dollars there. Um, to do a fifty-four inch deck instead of a sixty inch.
Will the sixty inch last longer than the fifty-four inch?
Hmm, I don't think it'll last long. We're just, uh, it'll, it'll do more, uh, it'll be more efficient with the labor.
And deal with, yeah.
So they just cut a wider slab and then swallow.
Could you switch it and see what it would just look like?
Sure.
What, thinking, hm, I, I, what you say there, you're gonna spend in labor anyway.
Yeah.
By checking that, honestly.
Yeah, they, they can't do all sixty inch decks because, um, uh, there's some of the places that they can't get between headstones with a sixty inch deck. So they have a mix of fifty fours and sixty.
Well, sixteen, the sixteen inch deck, they're probably only gonna use fifty-six inches of it. In a fifty-four inch deck, they're probably gonna use fifty inches of it. Because you, you know, unless you're gonna leave a strip, so, um.
Is there a motion to change the sixty inch deck to a fifty-four inch deck?
If he, he's requesting the sixty, correct?
Correct.
There's a written theory. Pretty much a question.
Yeah, I, I, I believe it.
All right, I haven't, I've, can I want to go into it?
All right. Okay. Uh, the quote cab used pickup, uh, they have, they utilize a truck to do their, uh, basically to move their, uh, crew around. That does the weed eating and those kinds of things. Um, they go across the street basically from the barn, the equipment shed that they have there. That pickup that they've been using is, is an old hand me down, I believe, from the street department. It's a flatbed crew cab. And it's my understanding essentially they parked it because it is, uh, burning oil so bad that, uh, it's, uh.
It was smoking, wasn't it?
It was.
It was smoking real bad, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so it, 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 the current one is currently is essentially unusable, so, um, so that's the replacement. But it is included in.
Okay, what are they gonna do with the old one?
Uh, probably, probably dump it. I mean, it, it will sell, but, uh.
Are you interested?
You're gonna bury it.
I mean, the bed, the bed could, uh, you know, I don't know what year truck it is. And the frames changed from model style to model style, the, the bed could be taken off and put on the new chassis. You know, is what I was wanting.
Yeah. I don't, I don't remember if this was a dump bed or not. If it is a dump bed, then yes, it would. Depending on what, what used vehicle or.
Well, I mean, unless you buy the new truck with the flatbed on it, parker's beds are expensive. So I'm just saying, if the bed's in good sound shape, you could take the bed off of it and put on the new one.
Any other discussion? Be good with it? Okay, for the animal shelter, um, this is a, um, as I understand it, a wifi antenna to increase the, the reach of the wifi to get to the security cameras so that they will function correctly. Monica, did I explain that right?
Yes.
Um, we have included, uh, in the trap neuter and release program for the feral cats, uh, eight thousand dollars. Um, if you remember, we had, um, come in rank number seventeen. We had, um, a rehab of the old animal control van so that we could get it more roadworthy and also, um, you know, uh, fix it up so that it looked a little nicer to, to use it. Um, that was proposed at eighteen thousand dollars to rehab that van. Um, I left in the draft at, uh, three thousand dollars to really just focus on the, uh, mechanical portion of that as it wa, as opposed to, um, doing the full, full blown rap and, and increasing. Brand new, and they ran it, so. You all good with that?
That, that gets all the mechanical they need on that?
I think, I estimated that, yes. I mean, I, um. Reorganized, revised the animal control ordinances at four thousand dollars. It's included in the draft. For building maintenance, our facilities maintenance, we have, um, this has been in the budget a couple of years and, and it just keeps getting carried forward. But this is the new doors for city hall to, uh, to make them, or the, I'm not, the panic bars where we can get out. This is really, as I understand it, a code issue where we're not in compliance with our own code for a public building.
Well, it's an ADA issue.
Yeah. Well.
Or both.
Their ADA, um, they have ADA openers on them. But when, we have times where we actually lock the doors from.
Oh, like, yeah.
Yeah, that we have, uh.
The other way out, you see the old police department?
Well, yeah, or, you know, with a panic, panic bar, the rest of you, you have to get a key to get out.
Okay. Uh, hey, I know it's probably the time, but, um, all the, there's several pieces of glass that the seals are broken too. Um, here, there's one right by the main door, and I think there's another one upstairs. At some point, we oughta get that into maintenance too, or, or include it with this. It's just, I've been noticing them and it's very. Okay.
Um, city hall break area, um, this is one that, that, um, the mayor and I talked about and we do, it was included in the draft, but, um, we both recommend that we take that out.
Brenda, did we give anything in the budget of the upgrades to the public works conference room? I know we were talking about needing a telephone in there and monitors.
Did you wanna add something?
No, uh, we had, I had thought at one point, the, the public works conference room is the only conference room that doesn't have the capabilities, like the telephone and the monitoring system or even the map of the city. And so that conference room needs to be utilized to just like, to upgrade the capabilities that the other two conference rooms has. So, but if it's not in the budget this year, it's not in the budget, so.
Um, fire HQ are the headquarters, the concrete replacement is out, um, behind the, um, the headquarters of the fire station where they, uh, set up their aerials and, uh, to, to test those and maintain those. Um, the outriggers have busted the concrete, and so this was to, uh, replace the con, busted concrete there.
You gonna thicken it or reinforce it? That's a, that's a safety issue. If, if we're breaking concrete.
So the issue with concrete is the way they pour the concrete. It's just personally, when the outriggers are out, it's fall or whatever, even that. So when we talked with Doug, um, we're gonna make a box where that concrete is, so the outrigger, it's center versus head of.
You, you gotta figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of, it's, it's issue is just we get four corners of a pad, we, we settle this.
Well, I mean, it's the classic outrigger that you're on a call and you set it up and you push through the street into a, an area underneath. There was, there's something hollowed out. It creates a lot of force. Okay, you gotta figure, that's, that's all I care about. No one ain't gonna have to, Chief. I don't want you squished.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd be expensive to turn one of those trucks over.
Uh, I'll bet you have, darn near have at a time. I bet you got some stories.
Yeah, I do, yeah. Boy, almost truck's bad, and it, it, it's not gonna last too much. The good thing is that our current ladder, our, our, that's, that's, it's over, it's over, it won't let you move the ladder anymore.
Yeah.
Uh, so unless you're going back to center, so, um, it's just getting worse. Couple of years, and in fact, it's starting to get worse, so we'll continue to do it before it gets real bad.
Okay.
Um, building maintenance with the, uh, the newer vehicle, it won't fit into the old place where they, um, they, uh, park the vehicles to protect the ladders and all of the tools on it from the weather. Uh, so they put in a proposal for a, another carport that just basically covers so that they, uh, protect the weather from all of the tools, um, while it's parked. Vehicle maintenance tire balance, balancer, they have one now that does for the smaller, the automotive tires. But, uh, they have proposed one that will also do the, the larger tires. Uh, we currently contract those now. Uh, and, uh, so again, trying to find room for wages. I, um, um, propose that we don't include that in the draft and we go another year the way we think.
Can I, can I come down from fifty thousand feet on that? And, I mean, so other times, I mean, just balancing, we don't, we don't have a situation where we gotta balance tires to get back out on the road, I guess, and, but, but. And so it does make sense to just hire that out. I'm, how, why did, why'd you put it in there, Brenda? Or, or why did someone, huh? That's what I thought. So at some time in the future, you know, how quickly? Keep track of it for you and come back with really good data so we know it's gonna pencil, right? That kinda thing, or do you already? Okay, all right. Yeah, okay. So we got it, that means fine to use it, and everybody across the board in the city would use it. Well, yeah, I guess that's really true, 'cause everything we have really needs a large one, not a, the small one. Yeah. So right now, all we can do is fire, I mean, police cars, small, passenger cars too. Okay, well, it seems like it makes sense to me. I'll watch for it.
Okay, for the cost sharing project, our contracts, uh, these again are, are, um, important that from a legal standpoint, that you all, um, approve that, uh, we can show the public purpose for, uh, contracting out with these other agencies. Um, emergency management, uh, we cost share with the county and the state to provide, um, uh, basically a quarter of their budget to, um, the state provides half of it, and then the county, um, provides a quarter, and we provide a quarter. Um, and that's about twenty, almost thirty thousand dollars. The joint dispatch agreement, uh, I put a note out here that if we took that out, we would have to add back in salaries to bring back in the, the, uh, the dispatch in-house. Um, I don't recommend that, but, uh, that is a possibility. Uh, Scott Joplin, right time festival, we, um, uh, we fund them at ten thousand dollars a year, or have in the past, uh, and propose to take it in. So there you have Pettis County Economic Development, um, we have, uh, in, in the past have funded them at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. This year, if you remember Jessica's, um, presentation, she requested a five thousand dollar increase to take it to a hundred and forty. That is what's included in the draft. The Wyman Area Leadership Council has five thousand dollars a year is included in the draft. And here's another two that I had, uh, have, have not gotten in yet. I had time to include in the draft last, last meeting. And, uh, we have been providing five thousand dollars support out of the general fund to the parks budget to cover part of the cost of the, of the greenhouse, so that they supply a lot of the, the flowers and the, the trees and those kinds of things around, uh, around town, around city hall, around everywhere. So, uh, that just provides additional support to offset that cost, some of those costs. Uh, the Fourth of July fireworks, we, again, partner with the, the Parks and Rec. I think that they spent about twenty-five thousand dollars on the, on the Fourth of July fireworks. Um, and so we propose to take ten thousand dollars out of the general fund to help offset some of those costs. The Christmas parade through the Chamber of Commerce, we, uh, we help offset some of those costs at two thousand dollars a year.
I'm gonna talk about that, Kevin. I'm gonna talk about that. What, what?
What's one, sir?
The, the Christmas parade.
Okay.
What do they spend the two thousand dollars on?
Um. It, it's been a while since I've read, since I've looked at that. They, they give us a report of what they've spent it on. I, I cannot, I'm drawing a blank.
The reason I ask is 'cause everybody that enters the Christmas parade pays twenty dollars, okay? All they give back to the community is to the tree cars, trophies, or medals and plaques. Um, they give out, uh, like a hundred dollars and fifty dollars and twenty-five dollars to the best floats and same with the school bands. So I can't, I, I, you know, that's twenty-four hundred dollars if they have a hundred and twenty entries that they're giving. That covers all that expense. So I just wanna know what that two thousand dollars is buying the city of Sodaya.
Uh, some of that money was probably spent when they done the truck, the lights and stuff. I, I don't know how much that, you know, that they had to spend, you know, decorating the truck.
But that's not the change. But that's just today, that, that's you all donated. I'm talking about the parade itself. I, I mean, I, I've been doing that parade for thirty-two years, and it's been canceled twice. Called by a refund, and they say, "Well, if you want your money back, we'll give it to you. But if you don't want it, we'll just put it in our, in our funds." Okay, so I, I just, you know, I mean, this is what we're here for, is to, you know, that two thousand dollars, I, 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 I just, I'm against that right now. Okay. 'Cause I don't know where it's going.
That is a good point, 'cause we do probably spend a lot with personnel, helping with the parade, with fire and PDs.
Yeah.
We buy the whole other employees as well, when they had the entities, what was it, I don't even remember which state, like a forest. Then we had to block, have the blockades, the, so.
We pay our labor to the street and alley to, to put the barricades up. I mean, we're, we're probably spending that much just in our labor more than, yeah.
Public works, police, fire.
Right, so I just.
So you wanna take it out?
I wanna take it out.
There's a motion to take it out on the floor, do I have a second?
I would say let's see what, uh, what the two thousand dollars provides us. And then if it's not something we wanna do, it'll be easier to take out in the future than it would be to add in the future.
I second taking it out.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Voice vote? Can I give you a call for a voice vote?
Well, you gotta count, don't you? I was close enough. I didn't get their numbers.
Uh, I heard both ways. Do you roll for both?
Robinson.
Is this, is, yes or no to take it out?
Yes, it'd be to take it out and then, in a few.
Do you want, yes, take it out, no, leave it?
No.
No.
Oldham, Marshall?
No.
Tina?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Oster?
Yes.
Bliss?
No.
That's real four?
Yep.
All right, maybe more of those.
I'm for taking it out. I would like to see more, I would like to see a rundown of what that's been.
I would too.
And if we find what's necessary, we can send it.
Can we then make a motion as Tom made, that they would at least get that rundown and we can put it back in?
More information either way.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, that's fine. Do I have a motion?
Tom, you make a motion, well, a good motion.
We have a staff here, and we'll make a determination in later date.
Tell them.
Put it back in. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Okay, that's fine. I think I'll remember what might have been. Okay, other, other event sponsors still remember this. Other event sponsorships, such as the balloon hike festival, we did include that in the draft, we had twenty-five years ago.
Do we know that that's gonna be sufficient? Is this the first time we have in the balloon as big as it's supposed to be? Is that gonna be a sufficient amount?
Well, they're getting, they're getting sponsorship on top of all that. We're just poking off then a little bit.
Yeah, this was just our sponsorship portion, yeah. I think they were close. I never seen her in a while, but she said she was. I think they were like, I don't know, a, a few, a few thousand short. And, um, and so I, I think they're gonna get there with, um, worth it. Okay? Anything we wanna go back and look at on the general fund?
Any of our department heads want us to look at something else? Speaking out of forever hold your peace.
All right, we're ready to move on.
All right.
Transportation, um, basically in the, in the current draft, we had a hundred and seventy forty-five. Leaves us a fund balance at just over a million, which is eighteen point nine percent. Um, at the, um, there were some things that, uh, that I left out that I added back in as well as some things that the mayor and I went through, uh, today. And so that would add another a hundred and thirty thousand to get us to one point one million, uh, at twenty-one percent. Um, the target is fund balance, I'd like to see us or push us towards a thirty-five percent, uh, fund balance. And that's just our minimum for the general fund, but, uh, we don't have a formal policy for this fund. So that puts us at, uh, basically three quarters of a million dollars short of that target. So going down through, we have the same sales and use tax at four percent increase. We've got CDL permits, um, and, and licensing and training. That is, uh, increased cost from, uh, because of, uh, the state statutes or the, the regulations now are more expensive. Uh, and eighteen thousand dollars is included in the draft. We ranked seven items. The one that came out, number one, was adding an airport mechanic. And, uh, so we had estimated that at sixty thousand. However, uh, uh, again, trying to, trying to create as much room as we can. Uh, I propose taking that down to a part-time position. We did talk to Derek about that. And he's, he's good with, uh, trying to start it as a part-time position and see if we can make it work and make it pay for itself. Yeah. The, um, wage rate, uh, same wage rates are same increases, the normal step increase is twelve seven for the transportation fund. The dollar fifty, um, uh, per hour across the board is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then again, numbers for consideration later in the year at, or another quarter would be eighteen thousand dollars for the transportation fund. Non-personal costs, uh, we have proposed a blade for the tractor for helping to move snow, uh, around the area. We've got a blade for the Kubota, uh, I think that was in a year or two's budget, year or two ago's budget. So, uh, I did not propose to have that included. The hard line for the, uh, self-service is, was ranked at number six. Um, it was, uh, at five thousand dollars. When we're talking to Derek, we think we can get that done a lot cheaper. And so we left a thousand dollars in there to try to get that to, uh, get that done. The scaly system for the fuel farm, uh, that is really for a compliance issue, is ranked at number two, and it is included in the draft. The rental aircraft was ranked at number four, um, at eighty-five thousand dollars, and we did not include that in the draft. Again, just trying to, uh, create enough room for wages. Um, we believe that that would pay for itself, but not in the first year, so, uh, I recommend that we delay that. The hanger lanyard was ranked at number five. It is not included in the draft. The T-hanger storage, adding, uh, storage into the end of the T-hanger, uh, was ranked at number seven, and it is not included in the draft. Ranked at number three was to remodel the old terminal, however, we, it hasn't been designed yet, so I really didn't have any kinda number to put into that. So, um, we didn't put it in any kinda budget estimate into the draft. When we get that designed, um, when, um, ESC gets out of it and we get that designed, what we're gonna do with that, we'll bring it back to council with more definite numbers. Uh, within the street department, we have the mosquito spraying that we do every year, um, or not every year, but for the last several years. Um, uh, there was a couple of years we didn't do it, and, uh, we have some citizens basically calling, want it done. And so we have added it back in at five thousand. Um, the snow removal materials, the reason why I included that here is a couple of reasons, um, uh, really more for information than it really is for taking it out. Um, first of all, that is an increase over what it's been in the previous years. Uh, this is very weather dependent, and it is typically a year ahead. So, um, uh, basically if we, um, would continue this year with very little snow, uh, very little ice, then, uh, we will carry over a significant amount of inventory that next year we won't, won't have to, have to buy. I don't recommend to reduce in the budget at this point in time, um, but I'm saying that that gives us a little bit of cushion, if you will, for, um, uh, as we were saying, we're reaching really to get to where we wanna be on wages, but that, that might give us a little bit of cushion. Make sense? A core drill, uh, was recommended at four thousand and it is included in the draft. The tree grinding, um, and again, I put that in here because it is in an increased level. Uh, and that's really, a lot of that has to do with the oak will that we've been dealing with as well as the inventory for a lot of trees that we're saying need to be, uh, need to be taken out.
Is it a piece of machinery or?
No, okay, that's contracted.
That's contracted, okay.
In the past, it's been sixty thousand dollars, and it's budgeted this year, proposed this year at a hundred thousand.
So can I buy a tree grinder last year, or a stump grinder?
A stump grinder, yeah.
But this is, it's all, we're, we're, I mean.
The materials man, yeah, and, I mean.
Oh, they do through all of those trees.
That equipment, you know, larger piece.
Yeah, yeah. So, so can I ask another question? Why don't we just cut it, haul it out on Agrium and dump it? And when we have the person come in that we contract with to grind all that?
That's what we, that, oh, that is that, okay, okay. No, that, I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay. So now I am confused. So this is the tree removal.
Tree grinder.
We're really not gr, it, it really is a tree removal stump grinder. We're really not gr- it, it really is a tree removal stump grinder. And the trees are removed, taken to Ingram and ground. Okay, so, and it went from fifty to what? To a hundred?
Sixty to a hu-
Sixty to a hundred. Okay. And it's just on our property? It's not on, I mean, obviously not on any public property, hi- private property?
It costs a lot when you get a tree taken down.
Yeah, that's kinda true. That's only thirty or forty trees, fifty trees. You get a better deal? Okay. Hey, I've got a question while scrolling. The five thousand dollars for spraying mosquitoes, do we really know if that's any more effective than going out and just treating standing water? Or have we ever, have you ever looked at that? Is there any way to measure the effectiveness of the spraying that we do?
Do I have to send you a car yard tonight?
Thank you, Director.
I'll tell the difference.
That's a fact, you're making people happy.
I'll send you a car yard tonight, I can tell the difference. After they spray.
I don't know. To me, I wasn't as cute as killed by treating standing water instead of spraying it and making it salt breathing.
Well, that, you know, that's part of keeping the city cleaned up. Your junk don't sit around with get water.
Well, yeah, I mean, just standing water on, but yeah, you're absolutely right, Tyrson, yeah.
Can we move on?
Yeah.
Sure. Uh, state streets for roads for all, the master planning, that was the grant. And I did not have the, um, the actual grant revenue into the, the draft at the last time, so that's one of the things that I added in there. Um, actually the biggest thing there. Uh, we proposed a daycap truck with an end dump and lowboy trailer. Um, this is at two ninety-five and that is included in the draft. A, a new backhoe for the concrete crew was proposed and it is not included in the draft. The steel wheel loader, the steel roller, um, didn't wanna come out. Uh, is included in the draft. Another, another hypo skid steer is not included in the draft. Uh, the hammer attachment for the skid steer is included in the draft under the street department. Um, the, uh, dump truck, plow and spreader, um, yeah, uh, is, this is a replacement vehicle. Is included in the draft and then selling the old one at five thousand. The replacement of a two thousand and four pickup with a V-ten at sixty eight thousand dollars is, um, included in the draft. But the, uh, the second one is not included in, in the draft and this is a flatbed truck. Um, both of those are one times, I think. The lay down area drive and pad is included in the draft. Uh, however, the fencing I did take out of the draft, delay that another year. At some point, we will have to do that as per our agreement with, uh, Union Pacific when we buy the property.
Um, what are we laying down that, if it's, that's just a area where we lay down the chip and seal material and nothing we really gotta keep people out of? I guess that's a dumb question and we wouldn't put a fence up eventually if you didn't have to do that. Never mind.
Yeah, uh, we, typically, we haven't had a fence for a number of years.
Well, I mean, I was thinking of the chip and seal, it's always been over there on mill, that- No, I, that's dangerous. I mean, I mean, there's a situation where you could, somebody could, yeah, I, I get it, that's- I guess I was very clear. It is the millings and the chip and seals that we're talking about. It's not, um, it's not stacked steel or something that could tip and fall. It, I mean, all of it's dangerous.
Back up to the equipment a minute, Calvin.
The what?
The equipment, the, 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 the steamroller and the backhoe.
Mm-hmm.
Brenda, which would you rather have? The backhoe or the steamroller? I know you probably need them both, but-
Okay. Okay. Okay, let's move on.
Okay, um, these two items were not included in the original draft. Um, there was a note, um, they were, uh, they were in the general fund, but they, uh, they belonged in the transportation fund. They took them out of the general fund, but forgot to add them into the, to the transportation. So I have included those now, uh, as, as additional add from the initial draft. Um, the right-of-way maintenance, again, we had, um, uh, mayor and I talked through this. It was originally included in the draft, but as you, as you notice, there's one in the street department as well as in the right-of-way maintenance. Um, so what we're suggesting now is that we share that and, uh, just purchase one. Skid steer with track, with tracks, again, is not included in the draft. And then of course, free mulcher is not included in the draft. Um, the cost sharing contract for transportation is the Oaks Transit Service. You'll remember Tracy Walker came in and gave her presentation, uh, for our annual report and, uh, asked for the same funding level of twenty five thousand. Down here at the bottom, we also, um, that two hundred thousand dollars that we talked about replacing the capital improvements, uh, program, that fund balance for that hanger purpose, purchase. Plus, we also, each year, we try to transfer some money from the transportation fund to help cover some of what's in the capital improvements program for the streets. Anything else on transportation before we move to capital improvement? Good. Capital improvement, um, as we presented in the last draft, it is of one point five million dollars, uh, excess of expenditures over revenues or deficit spending. Uh, ending with a raw or gross fund balance of four point six million. However, as I mentioned, there's about three million dollars that is restricted for the Eckerd Community Center. There's borrowed money that can only be used for that. And so the unreserved or unrestricted fund balance is one point seven million dollars, which is thirty two point four percent of the ongoing revenues. There's some things that we've, um, recommended in here that we changed from the draft that would result in a four point seven seven six, um, or one point eight million, which is thirty four point four percent. We set the target at forty percent, so we're, uh, three hundred and two thousand dollars short of that, that target. So going down through here, again, we've got the four percent increase in the sales tax. Um, and then going down through these for the, um, paving project, kinda starting out. The, uh, we had twenty one items that were ranked here. The first one we come to is ranked number ten, the down, paving downtown alleys, third to Broadway, at fifty four thousand dollars. And as I was going back through this, uh, with the mayor this, uh, this morning, we, I recognized that I had things that were higher ranked that were included and this one, uh, so I, I recommend to take that one back out. The parking lots, second in Osage, uh, the city and North Ohio, third in Osage at sixty four six is not included in the draft. The monument and weigh-in signs were, uh, ranked number fourteen and are not included in the draft. Um, storm drainage projects, uh, if you remember, we have a, um, a grant for, in that total project, uh, total grant is like four point four million, somewhere around in there. This is the amount that Brendan's estimated that we'll be able to complete this fiscal year. So we're showing the one point two eight eight, the DNR grant, which is, uh, which will fund fifty percent of it through the ARPA. And then I propose to utilize our local ARPA funding to offset the other half. So all of that is shown at a hundred percent strength funding. Sidewalk restoration, we have, again, this is carrying over, uh, the CDBD, uh, grant. Um, is, uh, is currently in there at a million dollars. It was ranked at number six. However, we also talked about the, um, the north central area that we provide for the grant, but we don't believe that will happen, even if we get the grant, will happen until next fiscal year. So that's what's in here right now for sidewalks, is the, the current grant is, that's still open. Then we also have other sidewalks at, uh, proposed at a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars, um, outside of the grant. Sixty five highway, seventh to Liberty Park Boulevard, it, uh, was ranked at number nine and is not included in the draft. Number, ranked number twelve was the sidewalk at State Fair Boulevard, fifty highway to third, at three hundred and ten thousand is not included. The bikeway, um, that is under the tap grant, um, um, is, is, um, included in there. However, this fiscal year, what Brendan's proposed is only the, um, the engineering on it. And so the cost of a hundred thousand dollars of the engineering was included in there. However, the match funding of fifty thousand was not included in the original draft, so I added that back in, um, to, uh, to show that grant revenue. Complete Street, sixteenth, um, from New York to Limit, um, at, uh, was ranked number thirteen and is not included in the draft. Ranked number seventeen was the bikeway, M-Track Depot to the K-D Depot, conducting those two at a million dollars is not included in the draft. So for street projects, um, paving Clinton Road from Grand to Thirty Second was ranked number four and is included in the draft. Thirty Second went in Limit, lane additions, and this was the cost share with MoDOT. So it's, it was ranked number five. It is included at one point three million dollars in estimated revenues or cost offset from MoDOT at six hundred and fifty thousand. And both of those are included in the draft. Fifty Highway in Winchester, lane additions at three hundred and fifty thousand is not included in the draft. Engineers Sixteenth Street to Twenty Fourth Street is included in the draft. Paying Main, um, uh, street from Oak Grove to the MoDOT right-of-way at six hundred and five thousand dollars is included in the draft. Paying Industrial from Broadway to Main at a hundred and twenty seven thousand is included. South Washington from Main to Third Street is not included. East Howard to North Emmet, or from North Emmet to, to Hur at eight thousand is not included. Warren, Sixteenth to Twentieth is not included. Tenth Street, Ingram to Washington is, at forty thousand, is not included. Thompson Hill subdivision, and this is basically an eight block area, at a hundred and seventy two thousand is included. Um, when we were going through the budget, um, we, uh, we, uh, recognized that there's something that's gonna have to be done, uh, to connect where Cedar Drive is now being changed, where the county's bringing it into the city. Uh, and it no longer meets up with the Cedar Drive that is inside the city limits. We just don't know exactly at this point what's gonna have to be done there, uh, let alone what it's gonna cost to, to fix all of that. So, um, I just estimated at five hundred thousand dollars and, uh, but nothing was included in the draft. Winchester Extension was ranked number seventeen out of twenty-one at three point two million dollars and it is not included in the draft. Ranked at fourteen was North Hardy and Bootyville upgrade to Route Fifty Highway and to the airport. Uh, uh, for a million dollars is not included in the draft. Number seven, State Fair Boulevard, straighten and roundabout at Main Street, was at one point two two million and is not included in the draft. Parker's Bridge, um, repair at two twenty, is included?
I have a question about that.
Okay.
Is that the road that goes off Grand and goes gravel all over there with the pedals? That bridge? That the bridge you're talking about?
Grand?
Right. Yeah, that's a, not a half, i- i- if it goes past the, uh, uh, Antioch Church. And then it goes all over the Grand. Well, that road is in terrible shape too, because I was down there today. That, that gravel road. So that bridge is unsafe for, for heavy traffic? So that road is, uh, that bridge is only used for, uh, emergency? Well, I was gonna say, because that road's not used that, that, that often?
Okay. Any other conversation? Um, traffic lights at Sacagawea, sixty five and Sacagawea was ranked at number twenty and is not included. Number eleven was Fifty Highway, Katy Trail overpass, lighting cost share with MoDOT and is not included. Number sixteen was Sixty Five Highway ramps and main cost share with MoDOT is not included. Pro Energy, uh, extension, Pro Energy Drive to Oak Grove at number nineteen is not included. Ranked twenty-first was, uh, downtown lights purchased and changing those over to LED and it is not included. The, uh, fire engine, um, for the, when the third station comes along was ranked number three. However, I don't believe that that will be needed at least until next fiscal year. So I did not include that in this year's budget. Uh, I still recognize that is a high priority, but, uh, I don't think it'll be necessary for this fiscal year. Uh, equipment for the fire truck that is on order at thirty four thousand seven fifty five is included in the budget, though. The third fire squad vehicle, I, it's kinda the same deal. We won't need that until the third station comes online. And I don't think that that will be completed this fiscal year, so therefore, uh, it might be needed this fiscal year. The fire squad equipment for the few that are on order right now at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is included in the budget. The, the, uh, central fire replacements design. Um, if you remember, we, we had five, five hundred thousand in this year's budget, but then we put that on hold for- this year's budget, but then we put that on hold for, uh, at least, um, 90 days to see what the, what the, the materials, um, settle out and then also, um, let us figure out where the, where the right locations are, those kinds of things. And, uh, so that will carry over and out to next year, so, uh, that is included in the budget. We do believe that if, uh, in ranked number one was the central fire station replacement construction, that is budgeted total at 2.7 million dollars, but then that, I believe, won't start until later in the fiscal year, so therefore, I'm split budgeting to carry that over for two years, um, or split that across two years, so I put in 1.2 million dollars into this current year. And then a couple of projects with our discretionary grant funds through the airport. There is, uh, $210,000 for the environmental study that has to be done and the design work for the 523 runway and then also the main parallel taxiway. Those are budgeted at $210,000 total cost and then $189,000 offset, 90 percent of that offset with transit. Then, uh, as we talked about from the transportation, this is the $500,000 transfer from transportation to include, to offset some of these costs. Anything we want to look at more detail, talk about, if it can, put in, take out? Having heard that, we'll move along. All right. We're on the road. Okay, last but certainly not least, uh, the CDB, CDB, CDCD, uh, Main Streets, it's a whole lot easier to say, uh, but this, this is the special business district grant funding. It brings in about $43,000 a year and, um, and so then we, we go through the, uh, the budget each year. This is exactly what, uh, the, uh, the board had went through and, uh, and recommended. So, uh, they had building and grounds at 1500, legal and accounting at 400, which is really the audit, um, the property tax collection fee at 1200, and then the downtown facade program at $25,000, and then they wanted to set aside $50,000 to help with the shelter and bathrooms at the, uh, in the, at the pavilion area, uh, to get those done for downtown public restaurants. For events, they have the, help with the Thanksgiving fireworks event, um, and then the quarterly business mixer at 1200, $400 for the Friterium Wheelman event, uh, 2000.
That's not an annual, that, is that coming back this year?
Yeah, my.
They're really, um, bringing new events downtown to the wire.
Okay.
So we do want to, uh, 700 Friterium, that you don't want to go to them.
Okay.
Scott Joplin at $2,000 and then also local entertainment for Scott Joplin at, and another 2,000, so 4,000 total for activities around Scott Joplin festival. A prom parade at a thousand dollars, uh, contention events at 2,500, some Main Street marketing at 5,400, and I believe that's it. So they are going, they are actually spending down reserves in the amount of 54,869, ending that one on 3, 941, which is 237 percent of their annual funding. Um, I, I, you know, about 60,000 over and above where I think they, they really need to maintain, so they could spend down some more of that, but, uh, certainly, um, healthy budget there, so.
Why is there 4,000 in this budget for Scott Joplin and 2,000 in the general fund?
2,000 is to support the festival itself, nearly 2,000 they created two years ago to, uh, hire local artists to bring locals to the festival, after the normal festival activities were over back then, creating the special commerce, trying to lure the civilians in and experience the festival around.
But you also have another 2,000.
Yeah, there's 4,000.
So there's 10,000 in the general fund and 4,000 in this one. So, yes, there's, and that's, that's been historically what they've been doing, so it's, they are dipping into both, um, to see, see that CD funding, the special businesses and funding as well.
Do we need to work on that at all, if it should come out of just the CDC, CDCD fund?
They need the 10,000 to, to continue their operations, to, to campaign, to, to receive a full bill of evidence, portion of their, or, opening of Scott Joplin, but that was, um, number one of our grants, perhaps, a little support to the sport.
There's grants specifically for Scott Joplin?
There's grants from the R. Council, from the community council, uh, that all have to be processed and filed together.
But we could approach them about shifting more of that to the CDCD funding versus the, the general fund? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of what I was saying. And then same with, uh, the Christmas parade, would that be something, since it's downtown specific, it would be beneficial at all to move it strictly to the CDCD fund? I mean, that's just a, they're out there for discussion if it needs to be.
Prom parade is, uh, I think an idea that we're stealing from Orange Room?
Yeah.
Where they, uh, basically set up a, a parade of all of the folks attending the prom so that they can, um, basically go from one parade.
It is a parade, a parade for the community to get the kids that are going to prom, and it's pretty popular in other downtowns, to the, to the moment, for all the people downtown, most of the people, people want to get their kids, and a lot of the kids are there.
We all go downtown anyway, it takes pictures in front of the courthouse anyway.
Yeah, they go downtown to look at it all anyway, so that's why I was asking, is there a need to, to fund something that's already happening?
I think it'd be fun to see, I'd go. It'd be more organized than the craziness that's at the courthouse for all the pictures.
Yeah, or in, or in.
So you, you want to take it out, or? Oh, oh, sorry, Tina.
That's fine, you, you can leave it in and see how it works this year, that's what I, I guess, we could see, but, like I said, they're already going downtown, so. Plus they have the homecoming parade, and, I mean, to me personally, just to have a prom parade for a thousand dollars to watch the kids walk down the street and they dress, and dressed up outfits, I think we could, I'd.
Or we have to sit up to barricades and all that.
Now, this was, this was pretty involved, the kids, the, 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 the walking parade, walking parade.
I think Julie had the plan last year of incorporating them walking through the courthouse, out, be coming out to the doors, there'd be some photography there, and then she wanted some plastic cars along, uh, Ohio, just to have a good backdrop of photos and whatnot. So I don't know if it was as intricate as other downtowns are doing. And I, I, I thought she mentioned something about including the banner program with it for specific needs, but that might have just been, I'm trying to think of, so. I mean, it could even be, if it's $500, I could, I can see Tina going with it, to see what happens this year with it.
Yeah.
But if there's needs to be a little bit of funding, let's see what, that will make Do you want to leave it at 1,000, Tina, or do you want to take it down to 500? Or do you want to take it out?
I, I'd say 500, see how it goes the first year, and if you need more, come back in the next year and take it back out.
John, how do you feel?
So do I have a motion to take its $500 from a final vote?
Motion to take it down to 500.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No. I, me too.
I'd vote.
Roll call vote please.
Robinson.
No.
Oldham, yes. Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
No.
Bliss, no.
All right, too. What's the count?
Okay, anything else? Anything else we want to get back to?
There was a question earlier here about R.S.O.C. and, uh, Tyre and Trail. If you jump out of Tyre and Trail, it does not affect us and the R.S.O.C. and, um, OHS money. Apparently you lose a seat on the board, um, takes you away from any decision making from the P.P.R.P. meetings, not sure what that is, and it also affects your access to EDA funding, which is the Economic Development Administration funding.
Wow!
I also don't know what that means either, but that's, if you come out of it, doesn't affect our apartment rent that we have in the R.S.O.C. just.
One last meeting, I gotta go.
Any further discussion?
Okay.
Having heard that, I'll, uh, I guess, anyone?
Yeah, well, if, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll kind of wrap up some things. Uh, this is something that I just want to remind us of, and was, you know, with all of this that we look at and, you know, the things that we want to put in, but we can't, you know, it, it can get kind of disheartening that, uh, you know, the things that we can't fund, um, but really, what I have to do is to, uh, uh, focus myself, is it's not about what we're saying no to, it's about saying yes for the right things. And so we have to focus on the things that we are saying yes to, and there are some very good things in this budget that we are doing, we're continuing to grow our great services and getting a lot of infrastructure done and created, so, um, so don't get disheartened by the things that we're saying no to. Just a picture of what's next, uh, we will incorporate the changes, uh, as we indicated and the consensus developed during this work session into the budget and bring it back to you as a presentation and additional input for your March 6 meeting, so you'll have actually a couple more meetings before you have to make the final, uh, final decision. Uh, we will have the opportunity if needed for another work session if you want to. We'll schedule a March 13 meeting if you want for us to go through, uh, go through this again, you had so much fun doing it this time, you can, you can repeat it if you wanted to. Um, and then, uh, of course, there's a public hearing scheduled at the beginning of your March 20 meeting, uh, for council to hear comments from, or input from any of the citizens, we specifically asked for that. Uh, every year, uh, it's not required, it's not a hearing, uh, because it's not a required hearing, but, uh, we ask for it. I don't think, uh, since I've been here, we've had anybody come in and pick us up on that, but I still want to, uh, put it out there for the opportunity, if anybody wants to do it. Um, and then after that, the council will consider for adoption, uh, during the March 20 meeting, however, uh, there are some things that, there is a public hearing that is required for the sewer rate increase, so that, um, that will include in your adoption of the budget and, uh, specifically items for the, the utility rate increase. And just a note that you can take all the way up to the 31st to adopt the budget, and actually there are state statutes that allow for, uh, if you don't get a budget adopted via K41, but I don't suggest we go there, um, because that would, um, create a lot of, um, a lot of angst, so. Then what? Uh, basically it's important then to monitor and report, uh, the budget becomes your authorization to staff to spend, so it's a, it's a very important piece. After you've given us that authorization, then, um, uh, we, we can go out and commit the city, so, uh, it's important that you, uh, you all take that formal, uh, formal opportunity or formal authorization. The ongoing strategy, uh, the budget is also a financial management tool, it is really sets a lot of policies, it, it, it shows what you all think is important, is, uh, is for us to accomplish, and so we need to, um, to watch that, monitor it and report back to you, and if our financial, our, if our goals change or our strategy change, then we also need to adjust our plan. Uh, specific strategies that I think we need to, to watch, uh, going forward, this is the Enterprise Fund Sustainability, you know, particularly the, the two that are, um, really hard, uh, hard situations or bad situations right now, is the trash, uh, the sanitation fund is, is, uh, in a deficit situation that we need to, to bring that back to positive, and then of course, the, you know, the sewer department has so much of the capital needs right now, um, and so we gotta set that up going, going forward to be able to, um, uh, replace that infrastructure. We want to continue the economic development focus, it's, my way of saying it, it's a whole lot easier to grow your will, grow your way to prosperity than using the cuts your way to prosperity, you know? Looking at budget cuts is awful hard to do, it's a whole lot easier and a whole lot more fun to try to figure out how to find more revenue to do the things that you, to provide the services that you want to do. So, um, the, the longer, longer term play there is with the economic development, the more we can grow, um, the, uh, the easier it is to, uh, provide the services that we have become accustomed to and want to provide. Neighborhood revitalization strategies and branding, as I mentioned last, uh, last meeting, uh, council, and if I'm hearing you wrong, you have, um, uh, made it very clear that that is, uh, one of the, if not the top priorities for the, uh, for the council, for staff to, to look at, which is to, um, uh, continue the neighborhood revitalization and, uh, and bring all that together, so. And then, as, going hand in hand with that is, is the housing. We all recognize the shortage that we have in housing, both in terms of quantity and quality, um, and so the neighborhood revitalization helps certainly with the quality a- as well as some with the quantity. And beyond that, I just want to say thank you, I appreciate all of your all's work, I know this is, um, this is not as exciting stuff for you all as it is maybe for me, but, um, uh, I do enjoy going through the budget, it, it is, uh, uh, it is a time that, that really kind of refreshes me as far as looking at the strategies and what we want to accomplish and, and those kinds of things, but I realize, um, that is not, uh, and it's not everybody's cup of tea, so I appreciate you all, um, engaging me and, and going through it in as much detail. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or anything that you all want to, want to go through in more detail. You have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. Make you adjourn? Pretty quick.
I'm glad we, I'm glad we had you. I appreciate that.